Councilmember Brightigan.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Dovin.
Present.
Councilmember Clovenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Win Pinalosa.
Here.
Mayor Protam Tran.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. May I ask Assistant City Manager Matt West to do the invocation, followed by Councilmember John O'Neal, to lead us in the pledge?
Please prepare yourself according to your faith. Dear Lord, as we gather this evening to deliberate on the vital matters before us, let us unite with a spirit of collaboration and dedication. We are honored with the responsibility to shape the future of our beloved city, and in this moment, we seek wisdom and clarity. May our discussions be guided by a profound sense of stewardship and foresight, recognizing that every decision we make has the potential to transform lives, foster growth, and cultivate positive opportunities for our community. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Please face the flag and join me in pledging our allegiance to the greatest symbol of freedom in the world. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seen. All right, that takes us on to presentations, and we do have one presentation regarding drowning prevention from OCFA Chief, Division Chief Kobe.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate your time tonight. It's that time of year again, right? The sun's out, families are out of school, kids are out of school, and that means we're back out and looking to do things. And that includes going to the ocean and going to the pools. So I appreciate you allowing us tonight to take a few minutes to try to help improve our trend, and the trend is unacceptable. So I hope that I can reach to you and your communities and reinforce some water safety here. So some of you have seen this from last year, but I'm gonna show you a quick little video that'll get your attention. So the key to this is understanding that if you look in the bottom left of that video, that's the Hemet Fire Department picture there. That's their seal. If this can happen to a firefighter with the knowledge that we have, it can happen to anybody. And as you can see, this chain of sequence was clearly coming. There's no question what was gonna happen there. And one lapse in judgment, lapse in attention, provided that opportunity. Thankfully, it was a positive outcome. So what is a drowning? I think we all understand it's a submersion, immersion in a liquid. The thing that you need to understand that is the fatal versus non-fatal drownings. Out of that, for every fatal drowning, five non-fatal incidents. That sounds like a positive statistics, but when you realize that out of that five to survive, many of them are gravely disabled as a result of the drowning. So risk factors are pretty apparent. You can see a lot of the different ones there. I want to highlight a couple of things that really emphasize. According to USA Swimming, only half the USA youth can swim, but yet 90% of the parents are they're gonna be in water. That doesn't make a lot of sense if you're gonna put your children at risk like that. If 50% of adults don't know how to swim, it's less than 18% chance that their children are gonna learn how to swim. So again, it's just inexcusable because this is a preventable incident. So last year, we had 104 drowning incidents. That's down from 111. You would think that's positive, but I'm gonna show you that it's not necessarily true. It is in a positive direction, but I'll explain a little bit more. By and large, most are under the ages of four. But you can see it's pretty wild that an older population, 65 and older, having so many incidents. So already this year, in my division alone, Division One, we've had two near drowning events. We had a four-year-old in Garden Grove over in Councilmember Brightigan's area that fell in a pool. And then we had a bathtub incident in Midway City. Thankfully, both fall into the non-fatal category, but we're already off and running, unfortunately. So this is the thing I was talking about. You would think 104 is better than 111. That's true. But if you look at the trend, it's just not heading in the overall right direction since 2013. We have a long way to go to improve this, and I'm hoping that presentations like this and partnerships with the cities and the social media platforms, we can improve that trend. These are the sources of a majority of the drownings. You can see by far it's at backyard pools and community pools. Very common there. What's common about that? No lifeguards, okay? Oceans and bays, quite a few there. Again, the best chance of survival in this case is to swim near a lifeguard, okay? The other thing is, if you look at the drowning factors, lack in supervision is the number one thing, okay? And to me, that's inexcusable. So we really, really emphasize watching the water. If you're in charge of watching the water and watching the children, you're doing nothing else. Put your phone away, pay attention. If you have something else to do, get relieved by another adult and have them watch the water. So it doesn't take long. I don't think any of these stats are surprising to you. You know, five minutes, it's irreversible. They're submerged for five minutes or greater, it's irreversible. And that is not very long. How long does it take to have a five-minute conversation? It goes pretty fast. So what do we do to prevent this? We focus on the ABCs, unlike, or similar to CPR, but we provide it in the water safety for adult supervision, barriers, and classes. So as in active adult supervision, I go back to that. 88% of the children who drowned who were under some form of supervision, but they weren't paying attention. Barriers. 2017 requires that you have to have at least two of the seven required safety barriers. If you have a pool, it is your responsibility. Even if it's not your child, someone climbs your wall and jumps in your pool or gets through your device, it's gonna happen. I had a drowning here in Garden Grove not too long ago when I was a battalion chief where a kid just went through a backslider, and there was no alarm on it, there was nothing to notify the child had moved back there. And we lost a young little boy on that day. So classes. Take a moment, go to school, go to classes, learn to swim. That's the number one thing to prevent here is learning to swim. Now, Garden Grove Recs, Parks and Recs, has a lot of classes, CPR and swimming available. Go to Garden Grove Parks and rec.com and sign up. So no such thing as a safe pool, period, end of story. So 80% of drownings, the child had last been seen five minutes prior to being found in the pool. So the thing to take away from this and emphasize is that if you're missing a child and you have a pool around, the first place you look is the pool. Then go search the house and go through the hide-and-seek moment, right? So drain safety, they've made a lot of progress there in protecting the drains, but children's long hair, jewelry, anything that's got strings off their swimsuits has a potential to get an entrapment in the pool drain. So ensure that you have the proper pool drain set up in your pool. And then flotation devices. Life jackets mean love, okay? Put 'em on, make sure that they're wearing them, preferably US Coast Guard-approved, that's stamped on the inside of the life jackets. So additional sources for, I think we all understand. So it only takes two inches of water in a bathtub to have a drowning. So open water and then boating. So in boating, hang on a sec, bring up some stats here. In boating, 80% of fatalities in a boating incident, none of them were wearing life jackets. Again, another common thing that is very preventable. And then it's the highest fatality potential along with accidents for kids over 18 years old. So there's some realities here of myth versus what's the real. The thing that the emphasis from this slide is that drowning is silent. It is not what you see in TV. Now, sometimes if you see a person struggling, we call it climbing the ladder. Their chin's gonna be back, and they're gonna be doing that dog pedal trying to keep their chin above water. That's an indicator. But the typical thing of kids screaming and people waving, calling for help, is not fact, and you saw that in the video. It's a silent submersion. Here's some safety tips for everybody to follow through on. My emphasis of this whole top 10 list here is being a water watcher and getting lessons. Learn how to swim. Don't be a distracted adult watching your children, and teach your children how to swim. Again, silent, fast, and the key word to this, this incident is 100% preventable. It's on us as adults to protect our most valuable asset, and that's our children. And by doing that, teach yourself CPR and teach your kids how to swim. A quick safety message from OCFA here.
Drowning happens in seconds, faster than grabbing a snack. It's fast and it occurs without a struggle. Nearly 70% of young children who drowned in swimming pools were not expected to be near a pool. Drowning prevention is everyone's responsibility, and you can help by following these safety tips. Designate a water watcher, keep kids within arm's reach, avoid distractions, and never leave kids alone near a pool. It's up to us. Always watch the water.
So again, we'll partner with the city, try to get everything out on your social media sites any way we have. We have a community education specialist that's available to support this messaging. You know, my hope is, you know, as much as I was passionate about this last year and we had a few lower drownings, I hope that was part of it. Maybe we did a little bit of preventive work, yes, from last year. Still have a long way to go. It's unacceptable to have over 100 drownings in this county. We're an affluent county. We have lots of resources here, lots of places to go get classes. Again, sign up with the Parks and Rec, go take the classes. That drowning I talked about in Garden Grove still haunts me, to be honest, because the sounds of grief I heard from that father on the front lawn screaming that he lost his four-year-old boy is something I hope to never hear again, and I hope no one ever has to hear again. The lesson, my partners in law enforcement, we get exposed to this. It's so preventable, it's so tragic, and hopefully this message will reach out and we can make a difference together. So I'm available to have any other questions for this.
Thank you, Chief. This is very appreciated and timely. Any comments or questions? Joe.
Thank you, Chief. I do have one question, maybe for City Attorney also, is, I don't know if we keep a database of our residents who have pools, but if we can send out an advisory about barriers or just a reminder, if that's something we can do?
We would only have a record if they actually pulled building permits, and that's the only way. If anybody built without a building permit, then we would have no idea.
Thank you. So there's there's some barriers to us being able to get to the homeowners with pools. So let's remind each other that if you do have a pool, put up barriers, especially if you have young children. So as a reminder, because we just can't put out those advisory to pool owners. We don't have a database, and we don't have a way to get to you. So everyone, please be aware if you have a pool that it should be protected by barrier. So even neighbors' kids, you know, it's an attractive nuisance they might find themselves in your pool.
That's a great message, Councilmember Dovin. Hopefully, in our social media blast and everything else, we can reinforce that, but you're 100% correct.
Alrighty, thank you very much. Takes us on to oral communications. I've got a handful of cards, starting with Kyle Mason.
I'm here to talk about my own apartment complex to start off with. On May 6, I filled out a form for code enforcement, and I haven't heard a word. He finally gave me a card. Hopefully, I might be able to do something with and get them to come out. But legally, we're supposed to have two sets of stairs for six units upstairs, but the one set has been blocked off since February 22. On May 6, I asked for code enforcement to come out, and the owner wrote a nasty little letter, says, "Good morning. I'm sending you this email to tell you the status of the stairway walkway repairs. We're legally required to hire an engineer to submit plans to the city of Garden Grove. Because of the recent California legislations, we are hoping the city finalizes its approval for our plans soon." So apparently, they've already done it, but they still haven't heard anything since February? And this was done May 22? We still don't have a set of stairs, and the thing's gonna fall soon. It's dangerous. Anyway, let's get back now to the neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. O'Neal. They did clean up in front of Simpson Chevrolet, and weed whack all the bushes and everything, but they have not turned the speakers down. And then things are going off. There's a lot of movement over there. I've got pictures of where they're setting up, well, things to go up and jump over and steal the catalytic converters. And then we also have those clothes containers that the homeless is unreal. The drugs are being, I've got so many pictures and videos. I don't know what to do. We called the police. In fact, I even called the police about a guy with a gun. I got the graffiti cleaning crew come out, and they did a pretty good job. The guy with the gun got away. I've got all the pictures. Nobody seems to care. What does it take to get police officers to come out? They say they don't have enough police officers. Is that true? No answers. The other thing is, when are we gonna get the fences going? You asked me to get you the measurements for the riverbed. I've done that. Six months ago, almost. We still don't have anything. The security guard at the Social Security is begging, "When are we gonna get the fence going across the back of Social Security building, attach it to Simpson Chevrolet, so that way the people will stop going by?" These clothes boxes that are illegal, they need to be removed. Amazon clothes shirts, the guy over the weekend dealing drugs in the Social Security parking lot, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, I got all kinds of pictures. Finally, Sunday, I called the police and they came out, and I don't know if they arrested the one guy, but they finally made him move the encampment out of the parking lot. So, but how do we get this stuff to stop? I mean, even with the picture of the guy living in the boxhouse who's walking down our street and stuff, I mean, y'all have seen him. I don't know. I mean, just... And then the video you guys saw, me chasing the gentleman down who jumped in my neighbor's backyard stealing stuff. Yet I'm the bad guy, you know what I mean? Do I have to be the bad guy all the time? Please help. I'll show you guys the pictures.
Thank you. DM Win.
Good evening. My son is trying to listen for me. Tôi có căn nhà cho thuê.
Oh, she has to help her rent? She's only...
Có hợp đồng là cái người thuê nhà phải trả hết mọi chi phí họ ở đó. Thì mới đây tôi nhận được một cái thư của bên sở Republic Service đòi là cái tiền thuê, cái tiền mướn, tiền trả tiền rách. Thì tôi có gọi điện thoại lên thì trên nó báo cái công nợ này là từ năm 2021. Tức là từ năm 2021 đến bây giờ thì tôi đổi rất nhiều người thuê rồi. Thành ra bây giờ báo là tôi phải chịu trách nhiệm trả cái tiền rách đó. Thì tôi có thắc mắc là tại vì tôi có hợp đồng là cái người thuê họ ở thì họ phải trả.
Oh, so I'm gonna summarize that. So she rent the house to a tenant, and then the trash that they didn't pay, it came back to us, basically. But the letter that you guys sent us, it's been like three years. We haven't received that or anything. So now it's come back like $500 or something or more. So she just wanna have some more questions.
Nếu mà nói là chủ nhà phải chịu trách nhiệm thì nếu tôi nhận được cái giấy báo này từ sớm thì tôi có thể là tôi đòi cái người mướn, tôi có biện pháp tôi đòi cái người mướn cái này này từ năm 2021, tôi là ba năm rồi. Thì tôi không biết cái người thuê đó họ đi đâu nữa mà bây giờ nói tôi phải chịu cái công nợ đó thì tôi thấy là nó không được hợp lý lắm.
She said it's unfair for her to pay for the tenant because she doesn't live there, and we already kicked them out, but now why do we have to pay for the trash? Because we don't live there. And then in the contract that they signed, they have to pay for the trash for the Republic Service, and we have to let her.
Tôi có lên trên sở office của Service Republic nhưng mà họ nói là phải dự cái buổi hearing này chứ còn là đó họ không biết. Thành ra hôm nay tôi tới đây để tôi xin trình bày cái vấn đề này để nhờ quan vị giúp đỡ.
She just asking for help. She doesn't know what to do because the money, we're not supposed to pay. So we come here today to ask you guys for help for counsel.
Yeah, xin thưa thưa, cảm ơn. Thank you.
Thank you. Thieng, Thieng Win? Or Tran?
Good evening, sir and madam. I'm a landlord. I have a house for rent in City Garden Grove. And I have same issue that I received the bill, the delinquent trust bill for three year in amount of $902. And unfortunately, the tenant was leave there. I didn't know. And they had paid the trust bill, and I evicted him, and he moved away. Now I can't, you know, collect the money from him. So I don't know why it took three years to notice us about the delinquent trust bill. And you say if I don't pay, you will lend the amount to my house. So I would like you help us to resolve this issue, to, you know, reduce the amount so we can pay off the delinquent. Yeah, thank you for your concern.
Thank you. Timothy Pham?
Hello, City Council. Sorry, Republic Services, this is another one for you guys. Not sure who's here representing you all, but yeah, same story. Let's just make it quickly is, my parents and I, we work hard to obtain, you know, house ownership, everybody's dream. But there's a lot of things that go into it that you don't know offhand. For example, our tenant left us and didn't pay the bill, and unlike maybe electric from SCE, nobody stopped service, and maybe that's some kind of law. We didn't know about that until they ran off with the last month's rent, you know, leaving us with that rent, and then that's when we knew they didn't pay. But the mail from Republic didn't come until May, and they left sometime in February. And so on top of trying to renovate fixes, worrying about how to get the electric meter back, which takes a lot of red tape, I've been here, so I know. You know, so that's another thing on top of that. And I think it's a little bit, I mean, I think it's really unfair for landlords to be responsible for a tenant whose name was on the bill, so they're technically the people that are getting billed. So it's kind of like, why is the tenant, I mean, why is the landlord responsible? For example, let's say you let a friend borrow a car. They come back with a car totaled, gas unfilled, speeding tickets, and you're responsible for that. How fair would that seem? And I just think, I'm pretty sure there's some kind of law which none of us know that allows Republic to go after the tenant. I'm just here to say reconsider that because homeownership is really a vital aspect of a prosperous city. I've been a Garden Grove born and raised person my entire life, and, you know, if this is happening here, not a lot of people want to maybe own a home in Garden Grove with all the property taxes going up, laws becoming harder to protect the landlord day by day. So it's something that, you know, even I come here, they gave us a letter that said, you know, that we'll talk about it. But I didn't know you're supposed to do in public comments or if somebody was from Republic going to answer questions about, you know, is there a way to maybe lessen the load if law requires that, you know, ultimately, we'll be responsible because I don't want this on my tax lien, so, or property lien. So just trying to bring that to your attention, whoever can resolve this or maybe, you know, educate us more, because we don't know about that. And so all I'm saying is that, yeah, if there's a way, like, you know, if it's your responsibility no matter what, is there a way to pay it off by, you know, in portions and chunks? So in conclusion, we're citizens of Garden Grove. We pay all the taxes. We pay a billion things as landlords, inflation, things going up. So, you know, please do a better job to help us mitigate these things when it's the landlord's fault and it's no fault of our own, really, other than not knowing. And I guess, you know, we should know, but sometimes it's hard to know. So thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas Dibs.
We just had a presentation. I'm Nicholas Dibs, teacher, educator. We just had a presentation from the Orange County Fire Authority on protecting children from water and drowning and so on. We also need to protect them from the internet. There's a crisis in this country that the social media problems, the sleep deprivation, blue light, all of these issues are across the country and around the world. And so I started a group called dibsdigitalwellness.org, and it was featured in the strawberry festival parade on my car. And I'm also a master sponsor of the upcoming college graduates reception. And so that's sponsorship is under dibsdigitalwellness.org. I bring this up because we do have this crisis going on, and what are we gonna do about it? There's some things that can happen. You passed a resolution on mental health, and we need a, like they do in the school district, to have a task force on issues that are of importance or youth advisory committee or commission or something. So I urge the council members to put something on the agenda of having a youth advisory council or committee. It takes a village to raise a child, and we all need to work together and build bridges between the schools, the parents, the community, and the city to mitigate the harmful effects of the blue light and so on. So dibsdigitalwellness.org. I wanted, do want to mention on the water safety, Councilman Dovin mentioned, is there a way to find out where the swimming pools are? Yes, there is. Besides building permits, the city easily can use the, from the sky, they can easily see all the houses that have pools. So the public work staff or engineering staff can easily look at the photos from the air that are taken. Every property in Garden Grove is featured on the computer there in the city, and they can look at it from the, up above. It's already recorded. It should be in there. Ask the staff to do that and identify where the pools are. Okay, that'll help that way. I have an article here on the importance of green space, and we do have, and I'm running out of time. There's one of our community members can't speak because he has a medical condition and can't be here. Other cities such as Santa Ana, Lake Forest, allow people to call in. I'd like to, whoever's gonna be the new mayor, put that in so we can have people call in and have a medical condition or disability and they can't be here. Allow them to come and speak. So this is on the importance of open green space in the Journal of the American Medical Association, published this. I also emailed it to you. Check the link out. We have 100 acres or more down at the golf course, so Willowick. We could use that and put it into a trust and have open green space, a nature center, as well as designation for low-income housing. So please consider that. Here's a copy for the clerk, as well as one for each council member. Take a look at this. I've run out of time. Please, please consider having people who can't be here in person who have a medical condition or disability, give them an opportunity to call in. Thank you.
All right, that's all the cards I have. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on oral communications? Seeing none, we will close oral communications and recess to successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Member Brightigan?
Here.
Member Tran?
Here.
Member Dovin?
Present.
Member Clovenstein?
Here.
Member Win Pinalosa?
Here.
Vice Chair O'Neal?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here. All right, we already did oral communications consent calendar. It's just receiving, follow the minutes. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Items for consideration, item number two.
Item number two is adoption of a resolution amending the Garden Grove Successor Agency fiscal year 2024-25 budget. And Ms. Song and Mr. Alvaro are here to give that report.
Good evening. Actually, Deputy Director Alvaro is gonna give the presentation for the successor agency budget. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair and Board members. Before you, for your consideration is the proposed amendment to the successor agency.
Before you, for your consideration is the proposed amendment to the successor agencies' fiscal year 2425 budget. The budget is primarily funded, there you go, okay, the budget is primarily funded by the ROPS, which is approved annually in March by the California Department of Finance, with the sole intention of unwinding the activities of the former redevelopment agency. As such, we continue the efforts of implementing several disposition agreements and continue to pay down the outstanding debt of the agency. On the left column of the table before you is what was adopted and on the right-hand side is the amended request. Initially, we anticipated to receive about $9.2 million from the redevelopment property tax trust fund for the obligations and administration of the agency, but have since received approval from DOF for an additional $2.8 million for this upcoming fiscal year. We have a little over 500,000 in available funds and are expecting 11.4 million from the RPTTF distribution for total revenues at approximately $12 million. On the expenditure side, we are budgeting 176,000 for admin and 11.8 million to pay the obligations of the agency. We are recommending the successor agency adopt the amended budget resolution. And with that, that concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, colleagues. Any questions?
Move to approve.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Great, any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn and go over to Sanitary District.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
President O'Neill.
Thank you very much. This time, I would like to open up the Garden Grove Sanitary District Board of Directors meeting for June 11th. If the Clerk could please call the roll.
Member Brightigan?
Here.
Member Devin?
Present.
Member Klavenstein?
Here.
Member Win Pinalosa?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Vice President Tran?
Yeah.
And President O'Neill?
Here. Thank you very much. We've already held oral communications simultaneously with other bodies. We do have three public hearings tonight. These will be read and there will be a staff report and then questions and then a public hearing on each individual item and we'll have to have a separate motion and vote on each one. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to staff to have a presentation on the first item.
Item number one is an adoption of a resolution to authorize the imposition of liens on parcels with delinquent payments for refuse collection and disposal service charges. And Ms. Song will give that report.
Madam Secretary, good evening, President O'Neill and members of the Garden Grove Sanitary District Board. This item before you is a resolution authorizing the imposition of liens on parcels with delinquent refuse collection and disposal charges. We hear quite a few speakers talking about this item tonight, so I want to give you a little background on why is the lien that's going out and what the communication channels were. So the refuse collection disposal services are provided by Republic Services and they bill the customers on a quarterly basis. The last billing for the current fiscal year was prepared and mailed in February. Now, all unpaid charges on that billing became delinquent as of May 1st this year. And it's by the state health and safety code that allows the delinquent amount to, plus a 10% penalty to be placed, to be filed with the county auditor recorder's office and be placed on the property tax. And it goes through the same process of getting paid and placing lien and, you know, even going to the foreclosure if the amount remain unpaid. So this is an annual process and the property owners are getting ample notices each time before it becomes delinquent and way before it becomes a lien on the property. So the letters was mailed by Republic Services and I believe it was dated on May 22nd. They do have to wait until a certain period for the unpaid amounts become delinquent. Not only that letter was mailed to the tenants or the residents of the property who receives the services, but it also mailed to the property owner based on the records from Republic can search from the county records. So that's how, you know, we have quite a few property owners here receiving that notification, which to me, I think is a good thing that people are getting notified in a correct way. So we also get the feedback from the board from the previous meetings that we want this communication to be out more than just a letter in multiple languages and they've been doing that since, I believe, last year. So this is the second year we've been adding communications, including automated phone calls, as well as, you know, Republic agreed to the city to designate live persons to handle phone calls coming from the Garden Grove residents. So if customers call in to the Republic Services representatives, they will give them guidance on how to make the payments, how to prevent those amounts becomes a lien. Now, I believe a lot of speakers concerned about the amount who should be paying for that. From the health safety codes, it's really the responsibility of the property to stay to the standard for the safety of the entire community. And that is why we're enforcing this and trying to make sure that the trash gets paid and the trash service provider can continue the service without interrupting the overall community safety and health standards. So that said, we had a total of 922 parcels that was determined to be delinquent as of May 22nd and that's what, that was the date of the letter. And as of yesterday, per Republic Services, that 138 parcels made payments. So quite a few made payments and those parcels will be removed from the list going to, you know, the county. And all of the property owners or the residents, the customers, they have until July 12th to make the payment. And the payment instructions and everything, it's on the letter clearly stated, you know, how they can make the payments and how to avoid the liens being imposed on the property. So what the staff is doing tonight is really just asking for a public hearing to be held. And upon completion of this public hearing, we recommend the board to adopt the resolution to authorize the collection of the tax, on the tax roll of delinquent refuse disposal and collection charges by five affirmative votes. And direct staff to file necessary documentation with the county for the collection of the delinquent amount on property tax bills. That concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Really quick, just to remind people, this is an annual event that happens every year at this time on these items.
Yes.
And then this would be an opportunity for directors to ask questions of staff, save your deliberations for after the public hearing. So any other questions for staff? Go ahead.
Well, I have a question because I actually received one of that letter too. It was the first time I received it and the tenant told me they never saw that before and it was three year delinquent. And so, and as a homeowner myself in Garden Grove City, I can tell you that I did not receive any of those letter. The same with the tenant, they never receive of those letter. And I could see the people out here say the same thing. So for me to approve something like this, I want to actually see they, they actually saw the evidence that they sent the letter to the homeowner. If this is the first time they receive that and they have, they already talked about that, they have to be responsible for someone that not them and they have to pay a lot of money, you know, 900 you see here. In my case, my tenant have to pay 900 something. They were nice enough, they went and paid, but they actually set up the automatic pay. At all this time, they thought it would pay. They never receive any letter. I call that number, the only thing they said, oh, we're going to lean it on your house. Like what? That was the only thing they told me about. So I was not very happy with that and I'm so glad that people came here and spoke about that. So that's in my comment. I really want to see whoever that said that they sent the letter, I did not receive anything.
President, I do have a question. Go ahead. Yeah, so it seems there might be some conflict if the letters were sent out or not, at least from Councilwoman Tran's perspective, she hadn't gotten any proof. Is there any certified or registered letter receipts maintained by Republic or the city that would prove that these letters were mailed or is it just put a stamp on the envelope and send it?
The city does not require Republic to send anything certified and we do not keep any records of verification or proof of the mailing. This is really out of the responsibility outlined in the franchise agreement between the city and Republic Services that we are doing this to make sure that, you know, each party's responsibility is met. And the administration of the entire billing collection system is all reside with Republic Services. And we have been working with them very closely to making sure that they are giving the fair notices, they are following the board's directions, making sure our customers are notified, informed and given the opportunity to pay any delinquent amounts and hopefully it's not going to go into delinquency. So, but we do not monitor or enforce how Republic handles the billing part of their services.
I was going to ask this, the attorney.
Yeah, and also, I mean, there may be a little bit of confusion because the notices for the lien does go to the property owners pursuant to the registration with the county as a property owner, but the, the initial delinquency only goes to the account holder. So if the owner is not the account holder with Republic, they're not going to get any notices until it's already delinquent and it's already being noticed for a lien on the property.
Question. Some of the speakers here and the councilmen have mentioned that this was something for a period of three years. Is there a way for the city to look back at last year to see if they were on the delinquent list and didn't pay? Because it's, why is it being leaned on after the third year, not the first year, not the second year? So that's my main question. So we need to figure out the discrepancy there and verify whether or not they were even on our approval for last year because then we can kind of cross check that right, right from the bat. And if that's not the case, then that's something we need to bring to Republic Service for them to fix. You know, while I have sympathies for landlords who rent out their homes for getting a delinquent or a lien on their property after three years, I don't think that's fair. But at the same time, it is your responsibility as a landlord to ensure that your renters are paying the bills that they need to be paying. So I think it's, it's a slippery slope for me in that regard because it's not our fault that your tenants didn't pay. It's your responsibility to ensure that they pay. But if it's an issue on our end for not having notices go out in a proper time, then I think, then it becomes kind of our, our issue to deal with.
More questions before we open up the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on this item. This, I don't have any cards, but yes, if you want to speak, come on up. Do you need a card? No.
My name is Nicholas Dibs. This has come up before. I think I spoke last year on it or the year before, but I've grown up here in Garden Grove since 1973 and over on the West End, we were, the trash was handled by Midway City Sanitary District originally. Then the city took over the Midway Sanitary District portion that was in Garden Grove. Now, so what you have is two billing systems in the city and it would be nice if you consolidated into one. Now, the way it works, because my, the home I grew up in is currently I rented out. Everyone on the West End who was in, used to be in Midway City Sanitary District, all of the trash, sewer and the trash and everything is automatically already on the property tax bill so that when I get the property tax bill each year, I pay it and it's included, which means we can save a lot of headache in the city and improve efficiency and cut down on staff time by, and because the property owner would pay, pays it through the property tax already every year. And then you just add that into, I've done that with my tenants in the past, I just add that amount into the rent. So it's included in the, in the monthly rent already and then you don't have these surprises that come up. So I would urge the council and the mayor to consider a resolution or a business item that you could, or the, I should say, the directors, to have it done that way for the whole city so that every property owner, the trash is automatically included in the property tax every year. And then who, when they rent it out, they include that fee in the rent. So then it's just a question, are they paying the rent on time? That's the only question because it's included in the rent. And that will cut down on the surprise, surprises where the property owner doesn't know that the tenant didn't pay the trash. So that's just a suggestion of efficiency because we're already doing it on part of Garden Grove already, what, a third or more of the city is over in the West part and that's how we're doing it over there. So it's very simple. So the question becomes can, if you folks wanted to do this or have staff look into it, can you see about handling it the same way for the rest of the city as we're doing on the West End? So that's a question that maybe you might want to ask and see what, what the feasibility is of doing this. It's going to simplify things. The property owners are going to be on top of it because the trash is already paid in the property tax. If the tenants are paying the rent on time, the rent includes the trash, it, you're going to cut down on a lot of extra aggravation and time of the staff. It's going to be more efficient. So thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Any other public speakers? I know we've heard from almost everybody in the room about this subject, so we've already taken that to heart. Any other public speakers on this? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Go ahead, come on up.
Good evening. I think the best way, like the other city, Santa Ana, Anaheim, the trash and the water bill go together. And so if the tenant don't pay the bill, they don't have water. They have to pay. So including, not, not go to the property tax because the property tax, if the actual property tax, the property tax will go very high. You know, the, the water and trash go together and the tenant pay for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have another speaker. If you could please just state your name again.
Yeah, hi, my name is Timothy Pham. And not to beat a dead horse, I know, I know you all trying to leave at a good time tonight, but because there were some comments, I just want to break down the timeline of at least my part, I can't speak on everybody else. But I, because my tenant was the name of the, you know, who, the name of the bill. So naturally, I don't understand why, what's the point of having somebody on the bill? Why aren't you coming after them? I mean, their name is on the bill. To me, that means they signed their way their responsibility, like if I sign my name on any other public document, right? So one, that's the first issue. The second is, as a property owner, I've never gotten any notification until May 22nd, which says, you know, you owe this as a property owner. And to me, the amount is, is a lot, but I mean, I can pay it and I'm not going to go broke, but it's more about the principle. It's kind of like, yeah, it's a thousand dollars. I can pay it if I have to, but I just don't know, the letter doesn't say anything about like, why it's the property owner? Is it the law in Garden Grove? Is it the law on the state of California? You know, and then it didn't say any other ways of like, is there any ways to mitigate it? Like, is there a way to, if you have to pay an installment, is there a way to like, state your case? Is there any way to reduce your funds if, you know, if it was not you on the bill? So things like that is lost in consideration. We just get a letter, even the letter just says, you know, come here for the Garden Grove City Council meeting. I come in, I'm like, oh, is this a city council meeting or is it the board? Do I only get to say stuff in the public comments or is the board going to, or the sanitary district going to be on the agenda item later? I didn't know there was actually going to be something, so I was about to leave, you know, didn't want to sit through the whole thing. So things like that, there's a lot of things to worry. I'm like, you know, still trying to worry about a million other things as a landlord. So again, I, to clearly state the timeline, I've never received any notice that this person wasn't paying. I didn't get any phone calls, you know. So I think that, you know, if you're going to contact the landlord, you should have contacted and said, you know, your property, you know, your property hasn't been paying the thing and I would have. So yes, you know, we have a due diligence, yes, to like, keep up, but sometimes, you know, I was away, I don't live here all the time, so it's really hard and you trust the tenant because, you know, they're paying the rent, they're responsible on the bill. So I would say, you know, why don't you guys go after whoever's on the bill, call Bill Collections or whatever. So it's not the amount that is the big issue to me, it's more about the principle and what the foundations could be. So, you know, what if the bill was like $15,000? Am I responsible just because I'm the landlord? You know, so I would say, please take that into consideration, want to make it prosperous for landlords. Trust me, that's very important in any city. So, thank you, that's all.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Before we go to member discussion, I'd like to have the secretaries report on the, on this item.
So President O'Neill and board members, as of the close of the public hearing, the city clerk's office has received no protest regarding this assessment. And however, if that may include the three people who did speak, but that is still not a majority protest.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll open up for director discussion. Go ahead. Just for the record, there was one guy who came in earlier, but he left before the meeting with the same issue. Okay. I had a brief conversation with him out here. Anyway, when you're a landlord, basically you're, you're a business, you're a small business. And, oh, yeah, it is, I'm sorry, is this better? Yeah, when you're, when you're a landlord, you're basically a small business and trash pickup is, is kind of a...
is kind of a, it's more than a human right, though. It's something that has to be done. And not necessarily for the person living there, but for your neighbors and the following community, because when your trash is stacking up and roaches and bugs and vermin are coming because you don't pay for your trash bill, it becomes the community's problem, not just one person's problem. As a landlord, you're, it's your responsibility. And I know there was some suggestion here, and some good suggestions, but what most landlords do is keep those things in their names. And then they get the monthly bill, and they add that to the rent. And that creates a system where you don't have to worry about these type of things. But yeah, ultimately, it's a landlord, and it's not just Garden Grove. I mean, it's every city in this state, and I believe every state in the United States, and probably most other countries, it's the landlord's responsibility. So, you know, I get some people don't understand that, or they don't know that, especially if they just purchase a house and they put it up for rent. Those are kind of the obligations. One of the speakers said, well, what if I lend my car to somebody and they go out and wreck it? Well, yes, that's your responsibility. You lent them your car. Your insurance covers it, not theirs. No different. So, yeah, that's a typical example of what I'm talking about. So, with that being said, the Republic will work with folks. If there's some issues, they have payment plans, they have all that kind of stuff available. And I'm pretty sure, I don't believe the Republic Services goes to the Admin Appeals Commission, right? If they wanted to, no. I think that's just the water we did that with, right? But, you know, they're, you can call them and ask them, get on a payment plan. I'm sure if you start that plan, they'll probably remove you from the lien process. But ultimately, in, you know, in the United States of America, not just Garden Grove, I know that was the comment, well, people don't want to live in Garden Grove because of this. Well, that's in every city in America, that's the way it is. So, anyway, that's my comments.
Thank you, Director Brightigan. Director Tran.
Yeah, so I just want to put a quick note that I don't think that the landlord, I mean, I agree with everything that the council already talked about, and I think my concern or my, my feedback was that there should be a better notification, rather than, you know, three years later, when you get something that, and you end up with, you know, paying a big, there was some, I think some of the bill was sixteen or nineteen hundred or something like that. And so I think if we have a better process, and then the landlord gets to be notified a little bit earlier, or when, you know, six months, or, I don't know, sixty days, or I don't know how many days that we sat here, rather than just for so long, when some of the tenant already moved on. And like I said, I'm okay with paying the bill if, you know, the tenant did not pay, but it's just a matter of that, the landlord should have, you know, get that notification early, not just now, or I'm going to put a tagline on your property and let you pay this amount. That's it.
All right, Director Nguyen Pinalosa.
I have a comment, but I'd also like to move the item. I would just say that next year, can we please make sure we have someone from Republic Services here? We're not responsible for trash, we contract out with someone else to do that, and so they should be here to respond to you and work with you and figure that out. That's not our job to do, and we shouldn't be taking up a lot of discussion figuring that out, because we can't solve that problem for you, it'll have to be through Republic Services. So apologies there. Second, maybe we talk to them about if someone hasn't paid their trash bill in three months, that they send the notification to the property owner, not the tenant or whoever's on the bill, because this continues to happen every year that we do this, something happens and we try to make modifications. So, you know, lessons learned, last year it was more languages, you know, more messaging, telephone calls, whatever this year it's going to be. Maybe don't wait twelve months or three years to send someone their notice that they've been delinquent.
Thank you, Director and Mayor Steve Jones.
Yeah, a couple of things. For one, I just want to comment, I do have the three speaker cards with your numbers on it, I'll pass those along. Perhaps we can get somebody from Republic Services to reach out to them and make connection, so that they can talk it out. And just to clarify, I mean, Republic Services is a private company, separate from the city. The city contracts with them for trash service citywide under certain contexts, but they're a private company, and your relationship is with them, and I believe your disputer, your ask for help is from them. Although it does sound like the several that came may have legal recourse against their tenants in a civil matter, if their tenants were in fact obligated to cover those costs, but that's up to you guys to determine. That being said, I do feel empathetic that owners are blindsided with this becoming a lien when they weren't even aware it was delinquent. So it seems like there is kind of a disconnect there between Republic and the property owners, knowing that if the account holder, whoever that may be, doesn't pay for three years, and then it becomes a lien to the property owner and they get blindsided by that. So there does seem to be a disconnect there between Republic Service and their method of communication with their customers.
I would agree. I do think there's a communication breakdown, and I think someone mentioned about the automatic withdrawal and payment option, and sometimes there's even an issue with that, where it will show that it didn't go, the payment didn't go through, but then you call and it actually did. So there's some, there's some definite bugs that need to be, that need to be tweaked and handled, I think, on that end. But I agree with everyone's comments, thank you.
Nguyen.
I'll be quick. Normally, I don't lodge any no votes, because I usually vote with my colleagues and the mayor. I agree with them most of the time. In this case, I will vote no. This is my protest vote. So your verses are heard. Even without any objections, the protest that you have lodged today by showing up and speaking up, I've heard it, and I will vote no, because I want Republic to pay attention. And I agree with Director Nguyen Pinalosa, we would like to have their representation here. And I believe last year we did. Okay? I have a pretty good memory. And I want them to be here, not next year, but as soon as they can, to address these issues. And I've heard some solutions, and one of the suggestions is, I agree with the mayor, let's not have our residents be blindsided. If somebody's delinquent, they should know one, two, three months, so you can deal with it while they're still a tenant. I know you got security deposit, I know you can go to small court, but who knows where they are to serve them? They're not your residents anymore. So maybe, as a suggestion, let Republic know that you're a landlord, and that they're sending delinquent bills, not just to the address that you're renting out, but to your homeowner, or the property owner's address, so you don't get blindsided, that you know that the delinquency is happening, so you can deal with it sooner than three years down the road, or when they've already moved out. That's kind of unfair for you. But it's also unfair for Republic to not be able to weigh in tonight, so let's give them an opportunity to come back to us and see if they can do some better notices, and that'll save you guys a lot of headache down the road. Not just you here, but a lot of people have rental properties. So thank you for coming and speaking. I will have to vote no.
Let me make, since I haven't spoke, a couple of comments. This system has worked well through many years. I've been here my whole life, and I've owned a home in Garden Grove for thirty-six years, and it hasn't changed, it's always been the same. I would recommend to the landlord, if you're a landlord, that maybe perhaps this one bill you incorporate into your rent, and then you take care of it, that might solve a lot of problems. Another, I agree with the notifications, perhaps there's a lapse in the mail, I haven't seen it, but perhaps, like Director Koppstein said, you know, if they're three months or even six months behind, that the owner gets a notification instead of just in May. Now, with that being said, you know, we still have July, till July 12th, this won't go on your tax roll until July 12th. So you still have time to contact Republic tomorrow, make out a payment plan, and figure this out before anything is put on your taxes. If it is put on your taxes, no one's going to come to your house and take your house away right away. What they're going to do is they're going to add it to your property taxes. If you pay your property taxes within five years, there will be no lien sale on your house. So it will be added. I know residents in Garden Grove that purposely don't pay the bill, because they want to add it to their taxes, because they may think it's legal to deduct property taxes as an income, tax deduction on their income. I don't know if that's legal or not. I wouldn't recommend doing that. I wouldn't recommend doing, I'm not recommending doing that. But this is the law, this is, this is, yeah, I'm not an attorney. But I just want to say, you know, and what Director Brightigan said, you know, it is the owner, the landowners, the homeowners' responsibility to make sure that's paid. I agree, there might be some communication issues, but this, you got, you know, the people that have paid were down to seven hundred and eighty-four out of thirty-plus-thousand residents, probably thirty-five thousand. That's less than two percent of the people that have got a notice. To change the system now, it doesn't make sense. We need to educate people more on, if you're a land, if you're not the owner living in the home, if you're a landlord, that you need to take responsibility for making sure that bill's paid however you do that. But anyway, is there any other questions or? I have a comment. One other, and it kind of goes with Councilman Deauvin's, you know, comment. What is the ramifications if we were to hold this over for two weeks? Because honestly, I am ticked off that Republic isn't here to deal with these people, and I think that, that's kind of a slight to this whole body. I mean, we're here putting on a thing that involves them, and they don't even send a representative to address the people that they sent the letters to. That concerns me. So if we were to put this off for two more weeks, allow these people to get their ducks in a row, and maybe Republic can actually be here and help these folks. Is there any ramifications? Does it have, does this vote have to happen tonight?
I personally don't think so, because we have until early August to submit the tax roll, to submit the delinquency to the county to put on the tax roll. So I believe a later date would be fine, Omar.
That's correct. So I'm inclined to go along with, with Councilman Deauvin and Councilwoman Tran, and, you know, make the motion that we put these three items off until the next meeting for two weeks, and then Republic can be here to answer their questions and, you know.
So, really, really, really quickly, we're only talking about item one, which is the delinquent fees. The other two items are basically the regular bills. No one is, you know, they're just regular bills.
I'm sorry.
For ID one, which is collected on a tax rolls. So, those are important to move forward, but those can wait also. I mean, the deadline is August. The issue with continuing too long is that it doesn't give enough time to negotiate with Republic and deal with Republic before the charges are due to the tax collector.
Well, I don't want to keep it too long.
That's what we bring it, yeah, that's what we bring it today, because that way, they have until July. You know, the longer we wait, the shorter the time that a property owner has to contact Republic, get into a payment plan, and get the item pulled from the tax rolls. So, but I think two weeks should not make much of a difference. It just, you know, it just extends the time, you know, the sec, two more weeks in July to be able to, to deal with Republic in getting these, in preventing these from getting on the tax rolls.
Okay, so I have, I had a motion that wasn't, original motion for, to move it as recommended. There was no second yet on that.
Motion?
I made it.
She made a motion, yeah. She made a motion.
I have a quick comment, though, regarding, I don't know that we need to put this off for two weeks. Three families came to protest. If we can connect them with Republic Services and get them squared away, and then have staff do due diligence, like I requested to make sure that this wasn't something that came up last year, if that's the case, and it's an error on Republic Services, and they should come to the next meeting, or whenever we have sand next, and speak to us regarding that with an update of what they're going to do to change this. But I don't think we need to delay the whole item, only three folks have come, there was no other protests, and they can get that resolved through Republic Services quicker than waiting two weeks to have this meeting. So I don't think that the best idea is to delay it, and I've made a motion.
I would agree with that, because regardless of what happens, that we can deal with the folks that came out tonight, hook them up with Republic. One way or another, these will be paid through one way or another by someone, so, and the longer time you have to make the arrangements, the better.
I'll second that. I just with, with obviously the caveat that they're going to be having direct contact with.
We have your contact information, if you included it. If you didn't include it on the pink card, please see us before we leave, but we will have them reach out to contact you on a payment plan, or however this can be handled. But delaying it is probably not going to help the situation. So I have a motion and a second on the original staff recommendation to move it forward. Any other discussion?
Just to, I find it kind of appalling that Republic isn't here, at least a representative. And that's kind of the main reason I'm upset. I do understand this has got to happen eventually, but I think it puts them on notice that we expect them to be here for this kind of thing, for the community in the future, and hence my second.
Understood.
Thank you for saying that. I vote no for the same reason, not because of the, what we talk about it more, about Republicans should be here to answer the question, not just throw it to us and we have to do it, so.
Mayor Jones.
Question for council, does this require a supermajority vote?
It does, it requires two-thirds vote.
So it would need five votes?
Five affirmative votes, yes.
Five. Well, let's vote on the motion on the floor, and then we can move from there.
Since there's apparently not five votes to do that, would anybody like to make a substitute motion?
I already did, let's bring it back in two weeks.
Well, okay, so then you could formally make a substitute motion.
It was her original motion was just second, it wasn't seconded when you made yours, so make, make your alternate motion.
I'll make the motion again.
Okay, can you just clarify your motion?
To bring this back in two weeks, and to insist that Republic have a representative here in two weeks.
Got it.
I have a question, did Republic Services know that this item was on the agenda tonight?
Yes, they do.
And was there a reason why they didn't send someone? Did they notify us that they wouldn't?
They did not notify they wouldn't. We did not demand them to be here today.
Sure.
Okay, I have an alternate motion, do I have a second on that? A second? Anything else on the discussion? We will, we'll vote on the alternate motion first. Let's call for the vote.
On the alternate?
Yes, it's on your, substitute, sorry, substitute motion, not alternate.
Motion received, seven yes votes. Oh, I'm sorry. Can we do that, can we take that vote again? And also, did you close the public hearing?
Yes, I did.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I closed the public hearing, you read the report.
All right, I'm sorry.
All right, so that was, that was simple.
We're doing it again.
We're voting again?
Yeah, we're voting again.
Okay.
Okay, so that was six yes votes, with member Nguyen Pinalosa voting no.
Okay, thank you. We will see that again in two weeks, we're going to move on to item number two.
Item number two is adoption of a resolution to collect refuse collection and disposal service charges on tax roll for properties located in Improvement District Number One. And Ms. Sung is here to give that report.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This is another tax roll-related resolution, and it's also related to trash collecting, collection and disposal services, but it's totally different than the previous one. This one is really for the next year's service charges, that by tradition, this, the residents in Improvement District One has always, improvement, yeah, Improvement District One has always been having their trash services placed on the tax roll and paying it through the tax levy, property tax levy process. So the reason of the Improvement District One has this collection mechanism, it's because of the rework, Orange County rework. And ever since the rework in nineteen ninety-seven, the service has, well, first of all, these residents has, was formerly Midway City Sanitary District, and the services were provided through them. And they have always been on the annual property tax roll to pay for the service, and it's from their request, they like to continue this way, it's easier for them to handle. So we are honoring their request, so every year we come to the board asking for your approval to continue this practice. The county do require, the county does require you have a affirmative, five affirmative votes, so that this tax roll can be placed on the property tax bill. And that is why we're asking you to adopt this resolution, authorizing the collection on the tax roll of disposal and refuse collection fees in Improvement District Number One, again, by five affirmative votes, and direct staff to file necessary documentation with the county to proceed with the collection.
Thank you. Can you clarify the, this approval's for billing for next year? When does that start?
Correct. We have to submit it to the county by early August, August 10th, to be specific.
So they could put it on next year?
Correct.
Or actually by the November bill?
Yes, November end, which is due no later than December.
Due in December, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions for staff on the report before we go to a public hearing?
Just one quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
I know we do this for D1 every year, and
I know we do this for D1 every year, and it's been an ongoing thing for decades. But the question did come up earlier, could this be done citywide to mitigate a lot of problems? Or is there a lot of cost associated with doing that? Can you elaborate that for me, please?
Well, legally, we can do it citywide, yes.
Okay, legally, it could be done, but it's going to be an expensive ordeal, is that what I'm getting, or?
Well, normally, normally, special districts that do this, and agencies that provide water and sewer normally don't do it, because they charge water and sewer in the same bill, and water is consumption-based, so it's different. So normally, the charges that go on tax rolls are fixed-type charges. For example, for residential trash, it's the same amount every time unless you buy additional services, like extra bins, you know, things like that. We don't do this for commercial for that reason, and multifamily residential is considered commercial, so. So if we were to do this, we would be able to do it only, probably only for sewer and solid waste trash. And then water, we still have to bill separately, because again, it varies depending on the amount of consumption of water that you have on your property. But since we are already sending a water bill to the rest of the city, I'm not sure, do we provide water in the ID one?
No, just the trash.
Right, that's, again, water in ID one is provided by a third-party private water company. So the reason we don't do it, you know, the sewer charges, or even sewer, for the rest of the city on the tax rolls, is because we have to put together a water bill, and we charge those other charges on the water bill, except for Republic.
And there is a cost to place these on the property tax roll. The county does charge admin fee.
It's a fair burden for 1% or 2% of this problem, maybe. Plus, I know people that don't want additional things added to their tax bill, like bond measures and other things, because they have a fixed, they know what they're dealing with. It's not added to your 2% a year increase on your taxes, but it is on your tax bill, and then if you have a mortgage company that includes your taxes, then maybe your payment goes up. So, anyway, we're still asking questions of staff, but I needed to open up a public hearing. So we'll go ahead and open up a public hearing on this item. Mr. Dibbs.
Well, Omar, I just want to, in the west part of the city, we do have a water bill, we have a water bill, and that's based on consumption, but the trash bill is on the property tax. So it's fixed, because everybody's trash bill is the same if they have three bins. And most people, we require three, I think is required to have three bins, the garbage, the recycle, and the yard waste. It works out great, it's been going on since, what did you say, 97 or so? And it really simplifies it, because every property owner pays it in their property tax, and if they want to add something into the rent, if they rent their property out, then it's fine, they include it in the rent, and it avoids all these problems. So I think that the directors should consider, ask the staff how much, I don't think it's a big trouble to transition this onto the property tax bill. You're going to save staff time and a whole bunch of headaches down the road by doing it the way that we've already been doing it in the West End. So it already works over here, why not have it work over there? So it works. It's a good system, and it cuts down on these problems, because no matter who is renting or not renting, it's included in the property tax, and then if the landlord wants to rent the property out, they'll add that into the rent. So it's worked for, what, since 97 on the West End? Why can't we do it in the rest of the city? So I don't think it would be real expensive to do it, I don't know, but maybe the first year, because you've got to transition it, but after that, it's going to be simple.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for listening, Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you, yeah, it just doesn't pertain to this item, because this item is already included, this would be a collection and disposal service charges on the tax rolls for this, for properties located in Improvement District One.
Well, no, I'm just saying, do it in the rest of the city, that's all I'm trying to say. I'm just saying, it works over here, let's have it tried over there.
Got you, got you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Going to ask the city how much it would cost, but anyway.
No, we don't have that number. Any other speakers on this item? I'll be, more discussion or entertaining motion?
Move to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm closing the public hearing, I think I did. A motion and a second, and let's call for the vote.
Okay, first of all, I just want to announce that, as of the close of the public hearing, the city clerk's office has received no protests on this item regarding this assessment, so there is not a majority protest.
Okay, thank you for catching that before I moved on. So we have a motion, a second, and the report, let's vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, we have, thank you very much for that. We have one more public hearing item, and I'll have staff read that.
Item number three is adoption of a resolution to collect sewer service fees on tax roll for properties located outside the city limits, and Ms. Song is here to give that report.
Madam Secretary, this is the final one on a tax roll-related item, which is the service for sewer services, nothing refuse-related. So as you know, there are certain areas that, outside the city limits, that do not receive water services provided by the city, but later on becomes a responsibility for sewer services. And these services are, cannot be added onto our water bills, because typically, with all the properties within the city's limits that we provide water services, it's a one bill, includes both water and sewer charges. For the ones who doesn't, who don't receive water services, the most efficient way for us to collect the sewer charges would be going through the tax roll process on an annual basis. And since there's not too many parcels outside the city limits and not receiving the water bills, it's about less than 2,000 parcels, so it is doable for us to do this process on an annual basis. And again, in order for us to place this on the county's tax roll, we do require five affirmative votes from the board, and also to direct us to file the necessary reports with the county. So I'm here to request you to open the public hearing and giving us a direction.
Thank you very much. Any questions from directors before we go to public hearing on this item regarding the sewer? Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, any speakers on item three? Mr. Dibbs.
Okay, I think that the sewer is included with the trash in the west part of the city.
These are particular areas.
Okay, but you're talking about just the sewer over here on that one, but I want to correct what I said earlier, which is, in addition to the refuge collection, the sewer is also in the property tax. I'm pretty sure, on the West End, but George, you know, anyway, I think that that's the case. Anyway, the point is this, the sewer charges, which comes down to Orange County Sanitation District, et cetera, have been added, I believe, on the Improvement District One, so this makes sense. So citywide, if you were to include these three areas, one, two, and this one we're doing now, where the sewer and the trash are in the property tax, it's going to simplify it for the whole thing, make it simple and easy. That's the point. Thank you. So if you'll please consider that.
Thank you, thank you very much. Any other speakers on item three? I will go ahead and close the public hearing, member, oh, I'm sorry, secretary's report before I get carried away.
President O'Neill and board members, as of the close of the public hearing, the city clerk's office has received no protests regarding this assessment, this is not a majority protest.
Thank you. Any discussion or a motion? I have a motion and a second.
Who's the second?
I think second was George. Call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, thank you, we're almost done, busy night with Sanitary District. We do have one item of consideration, item number four.
Item number four is adoption of resolutions amending the Garden Grove Sanitary District fiscal year 2024-25 budget, and Mr. Castillon is here to give that report.
Evening, once again, Mr. President and directors. Before you, for your consideration, is the Sanitary District's amended 2425 budget. The Sanitary District, as you know, operates two separate and distinct programs, the maintenance of our sewer system and the solid waste collection. We will review the budgets for both programs momentarily, but I also want to highlight what we're planning on doing this upcoming fiscal year. Excuse me, the district will carry out planned sewer capital program of $12.6 million. In addition, will continue to manage the main sewer line inspection and cleaning. The staff inspect and clean an average of 85,000 linear feet per year, that's roughly about 16 miles. Will continue to provide the manhole inspection and replacement program, we're anticipating inspecting about 2,900 this upcoming year. Continue with the public education for fats, oils, and grease control, to stay compliant with the MPDES regulations. Just as a note, we conducted a total of about 515 inspections of restaurants and industrial commercial buildings in the last year. As far as public education is concerned, we, our facilities are provided stormwater pollution prevention brochures, and are fat, oil, and grease control-related brochures. On the refuse side, we'll continue the implementation of SB 1383, which is the district-wide mandatory organics and traditional recycling programs. We have secured grant funding to continue to comply with it, and we've also completed the district's compliance action plan with CalRecycle to implement all aspects of SB 1383. Will continue to provide the street sweeping and bus shelter trash cleanup, and lastly, we'll continue to monitor the landfill. We've engaged a consultant to conduct all the county AQMD and EPA regulatory reports, and we'll be bringing proposals to the board next fiscal year. And as mentioned earlier, the Sanitary District has two programs, and they have different funding sources. On the left, you'll see the sewer funds, and on the right is the refuse fund. Total revenue for the sewer funds are remaining the same, and on the expenditure side, there is a slight increase of about, or there's an increase of about $4.2 million being proposed due to increases in labor costs, as well as increases for the capital projects. On the refuse side, we are proposing an increase on the revenue, as revenues have all increased, and we anticipate it continuing next fiscal year. There's also a slight increase proposed on the expenditure side of approximately $64,000 for labor costs, and while that to say, we're anticipating ending the year with a fund balance of $44.7 million for both funds. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer, any questions from the board?
Thank you very much for that. Any questions from board members, directors, or a motion?
Second.
A motion from Brightigan, and a second from Klopfestein? Please call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right.
Oh, you fooled me.
Dovin voted no.
Okay, let me take that vote again, please.
Motion received, six yes votes, with council member, I'm sorry, member Dovin voting no.
Let's finalize that.
Got it, thank you very much. Any other matters from board members tonight before we adjourn this meeting? Seeing or hearing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn until the next regular meeting of Sanitary District for Tuesday, June 25th, here in this room. I will go ahead and turn it over to the mayor and city council.
Thank you. We'll reconvene city council. I feel for you, John, but I'm glad you got to handle those.
Those are always a little different.
Yeah. Okay, we'll reconvene, takes us on to consent calendar, it's recommended that items two through 12 be acted on simultaneously, unless anyone would like to pull an item.
Move to approve.
All the vote?
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, we have several different items for consideration, so we'll go on to item number 13.
Item number 13 is adoption of resolutions amending the fiscal year 2024-25 budget, and Ms. Song is here to give that report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. We are very excited to present you with the amended budget for fiscal year 2320, 2425. Last June, we adopted our fiscal years 23 through 25, the biannual budget, and towards the end of first year, we, by the budget process, we do a mid-cycle review. This is a chance to enable us to evaluate our revenues and expenditures, and to make necessary adjustments to the second year's budget, including our capital improvement plan. So we're here tonight to provide you with a financial update, a presentation of a proposed fiscal year 2425 amended budget. Before I dive into all the exciting numbers, I know everyone likes numbers, I'd like to spend a few minutes to share with you some of the major achievements in the budgeting, financial reporting, and financial management areas. The most significant achievement for the finance department, as well as the city this year, is to receive that distinguished budget presentation award from the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA. We received this award in February, and this is the first GFOA budget award the city has ever received. So GFOA recognizes budget documents over a very, of the very highest quality that reflect both the guidelines established by the National Advisory Council on the state and local budgeting, and the GFOA's best practices. Less than 2% of all cities and towns in the U.S. are being recognized for this award. This makes a milestone for the city, reason being is that, we all know, there are two most important financial documents for any given city, one is the financial, annual financial report, the other one's the budget document. So now, with getting, with achieving this award, we're both, we have both financial documents recognized nationally, which is huge to the city, and really helped with our credit rating. As a matter of fact, in November 2023, talking about our financial report, we received the 39th consecutive award from the GFOA. And again, this is the highest recognition any government agency can receive in the financial reporting area. So another item I'd like to share is that, in December 2023, the city strategically defeasted its 2015 lease revenue bonds. The bonds carried an outstanding balance of 21 million back then, and there were two significant goals achieved by defeating this bond. One is that we realized the cash flow savings of over 11 million, and more importantly, the encumbrances on the properties in the civic center area were released by the defeesance, which enabled the housing development, one of the housing development projects, and also the civic center revitalization project. So we couldn't have done this without our strong cash position, which leads to the next achievements. In April, the city received its most recent credit rating from the Standard and Poor's Global Reading Agency in conjunction with our issuance of our new lease revenue bonds. A double-A underlying long-term rating was assigned with stable outlook. The reading report cited several key metrics supporting the score, including strong economy, very strong budgetary performance and flexibility, very strong liquidity, very strong management, adequate debt and long-term liabilities, and strong institutional framework. The outstanding credit rating is a testament to the city council's consistent direction on establishing effective financial management policies and practices, and enforcing disciplined spending, and commitment to the city's long-term financial well-being, so thank you all for that. Last but not least, last Tuesday, we successfully closed the Garden Grove Public Financing Authority Lease Revenue Bonds Series 2024A. The bonds carry a principal balance of 140 million, with a 30-year term. Average coupon rate was 4.59%, and the true interest costs were less than 4%, which is very impressive in a market like this today. Due to the strong profile and precise timing, the market demand was overwhelming. A total of 208 orders were received, receiving totally nearly 800 million in total, within the first 90 minutes. So premiums of nearly 12 million were received, and directly benefiting the Civic Center Revitalization Project. It is the passage of the measure, all and years of prudent financial management, the city is able to welcome its new state-of-the-art police headquarters and the reimagined Civic Center Park. However, committing to such a large-scale infrastructure requires careful planning, both financially and operationally, so it is important for us to take a look at how we're doing this year financially, and how we're looking into the next year. So now I'm going to hand it over to Deputy Director Alvaro Castillon to talk about our general fund performances.
Good evening, once again, mayor and city council. I'll try to stay away from figures, I love numbers, but maybe not everybody's like me, but, so here on slide eight are our projected numbers that you will see in the, actually, the projected numbers that you're going to see in these next two slides are preliminary, as we have not closed the books yet for fiscal year 2324, but these projections are best estimate at this point in time. So here, starting with this slide, this is for our general fund revenues. The table shows the adoption. The table shows the adopted revenue in comparison to what we're projecting to end the year. The operating revenues were adopted at 167.2 million along with the use of the 2223 surplus of 1.6 million for a grand total, which you'll see at the bottom there, of 168.9 million for 2324. Overall, our general fund operating revenues are anticipated to exceed budget estimates by 15.3 million dollars. This is primarily due to a surge in property taxes of 8.1 million in comparisons to budget estimates. The property tax growth is based on property values and increases at a maximum 2% due to Prop 13, unless the property is sold and or changes ownership. But during fiscal year 2324, the housing market was thriving, particularly in the first two quarters of the fiscal year. And the level of activity in the housing market is directly correlated to the increases in property taxes that were generated. Hotel visitors' tax is also projected to generate 3.3 million dollars higher than budget estimates. This is now the second consecutive year that we're anticipating the hotel visitors' tax to generate over 28 million, and we anticipate this continuing into the future. There are also projected increases across the board in our building and planning fees, lease income, as well as our business license tax. The one source that is sort of an anomaly in that it's coming in right about what we were estimating is our sales tax in measure O, which is combined in that sales tax line there that you'll see. It's the second line there. City staff along with our sales tax consultants will continue to monitor the sales tax to ensure that our estimates are always on target. You'll also notice on this table that a one-time contribution from the general fund's fund balance of 18.4 million was added as a result of two one-time capital expenditures approved by the city council during the fiscal year, which were, as Patricia mentioned earlier, the defeasance of the 2015 bonds and the acquisition of the Euclid building. So taking into account the operating revenues plus the one-time revenues, we are projecting general fund revenues to be roughly around 202.7 million for 2024. Moving on to the expenditure side, the originally adopted budget for 2324 was 168.9 million. However, those two items that I just mentioned, along with carryover funding from the pavement management program, the Purcell Building, and the Civic Center Project, increased the budget by 45.6 million for a total of 214.5 million that you see here on the table. This enabled us to accomplish several accomplishments that Patricia highlighted earlier, including improving the city's infrastructure, stimulating economic development, maintaining public safety, hosting several community events, and we did all that while maintaining the city's general fund in a healthy position. So out of the 214.5 million that you see there, we're projecting that only about 202.7 million will be expended due to salary savings from vacancies and ongoing projects with remaining funding that will be carried over to the next fiscal year. And also there in that bullet point there, in order to comply with the city's general fund reserve policy of two months' worth of operating revenues, we're recommending a transfer of 2.2 million dollars from unassigned fund balance to the stability reserve fund to bring the total reserve to 27.9 million. The resolution to authorize a transfer is attached to the staff report for your consideration and approval. As, as we were preparing to amend the 2425 budget, we knew that there were a couple of items that we needed to embed in the budget, including the 3.6 million dollar increase to our annual unfunded actuarial liability payment to CalPERS, of which 3.1 million dollars is needed in the general fund. This payment is adjusted annually by CalPERS based on their actuarial analysis. Patricia later on will provide a bit of a deeper dive shortly on what the unfunded pension liability means for our city. The other item was the 7.2 million dollar debt service payment for those 2024 lease revenue bonds that are being used to construct the public safety facility and the reimagined civic center park. The amount is partially offset by the defeasance of the 2015 bonds, and so the net impact to the general fund is 5.6 million dollars. And then the next item we needed to embed was 2.5 million dollars for the Euclid building, parking lot, and tenant improvements there. And lastly, after revising the projected revenue amount for 2425, the departments submitted supplemental requests, which are requests that are over and above their base budget for consideration. So these are basically the four main changes that we needed to include in this upcoming fiscal year's budget. Before I move on to the figures and the recommended supplemental requests, I'll now turn it over to Patricia who will provide a detailed look at our unfunded pension liability.
Yeah, thank you, Alvaro. The reason I want to spend a little time talking about this is because you see all those four categories on the previous slide of the changes to our next year budget. The other three are all for something that's positive, that we initiated, that we want to do, except for the first ones to CalPERS. So, so I want to give you a little bit more background. The nearly 4 million additional contribution was a direct result from the investment loss that happened in 2022 by CalPERS. And CalPERS had this policy of ramping up those investment losses, so we don't get hit until three years later, which is next year fiscal year 25. Now, we have two plans with CalPERS, one for our safety employees and the others for all non-swarm personnel. As you can see from the top two graphs here, the normal cost, which is the dotted line here, is declining or decline in fiscal year 25. Yet the unfunded liability had a surge of nearly 4 million we're paying included in this amended budget. And moreover, if you look at the table on the bottom, the funded ratio had a sharp decline in both plans, again, due to the investment losses happened in 2022. The discount rate on the bottom of the table is the targeted return on investment established by CalPERS, and it is also the borrowing rate they charge us as member agencies for all of our unfunded liabilities. While the existing unfunded liability is being paid down year over year, the new liability caused by investment losses are amortized over a much shorter period and become a huge risk factor for member agencies like us. The most recent CalPERS valuation report shows that we have an aggregated UAL, or the unfunded actuarial liability, north of 360 million. It is not uncommon, though, for agencies our size with our history, the number of employees, and yet it is still a huge liability imposing budgetary threats. The city has been diligently working on addressing our pension liability issue. Back in 2019, the city council adopted a pension funding policy and making funding for pension liability a priority. And a internal revenue code section 115 pension trust account was also established because of that policy, and we now, we started making annual contributions since 2019. As of today, we have over 4 million dollars in assets in that trust account. So additionally, we also started to explore the possibility of issuing a pension obligation bonds. And if you remember that back in March of 2022, the city council approved a resolution authorizing the issuance of such bonds and enabled us to initiate the judicial proceeding. And I believe three months later in June in '22 that we received the approval from the court, allowing us to move forward. However, in the second half of '22, the interest rates start happening, and you know, it just becomes a little nervous for everybody. You know, issuing a bond even though it still would be beneficial because the rate we can get from a fixed-term bond would be a lot better than the 6.8% that CalPERS is charging us. But again, back then, because of the markets moving very rapidly, we don't have the confidence of, you know, making sure that we are protecting the best interest of the city or constituents back then. So we want to wait it out a little bit to see. We are still closely monitoring the market, working with our municipal advisor to see what is the perfect timing to get this potential, well, to get this particular liability kind of like nailed down, fixed, so that we can have better budget control, we can have lower risk factors associated with that. So next, I'm going to let Alvaro talk about all the exciting supplemental requests that we're including in this budget.
All right. General fund supplemental requests here. For community development, we're recommending a couple of reclassifications of positions in order to accelerate plan checks and keep more of the plan check revenues in the city and to also provide resources for code enforcement. We're proposing, as you can see there on the screen, to reclassify a vacant building inspector to plan check engineer, reclassifying two part-time parking control specialists to one part-time code enforcement officer, and reclassify a plan check engineer to building division manager. For the city manager's office, we're recommending one-time funds of 250,000 for community beautification, including addressing graffiti and other items that the city manager's office would like to do to enhance our, our community. We're also adding an intern position for the city manager's office as well. For economic development and housing, we're recommending to reclassify the admin aide to an admin analyst to provide some admin resources to the housing division. The net cost is about 17,900 per year, but as you can see on the screen there, there's anticipated savings to the general fund of about 64,000 as the cost of the analyst will be funded by different funding sources. Moving on to the figures, the general fund operating revenues for 2425 were originally adopted at 171.6 million along with the use of 2223 surplus of 2.7 for a grand total of 174.3 million. Given recent revenue trends along with updated information from the city's property tax consultants, staff is recommending 11.1 million dollars in revenue adjustments for an amended total of 185.4 million. Again, these, the vast majority of these changes are for property tax and hotel visitors' tax as well. And it's based on projected housing activity and tourism activity within the city. We're also, as you see at the bottom, recommending to use 1.1 million in fund balance to be able to fund one-time expenditures such as the Euclid building improvement. On the expenditure side, the adopted general fund budget was 174.3 million. This included COLAs that were negotiated through MOUs, benefit increases, supplemental requests, as well as OCFA service cost increase, increases. While the max that OCFA can increase our cost is capped at 4.5%, OCFA increased our cost by 4% for this fiscal year only. After adding everything that we just talked about and the supplemental requests, we're recommending to adjust the budget by 11.1 million for a total amended budget of 185.4 million dollars. Moving on to the non-general fund. In addition to general fund supplemental requests, there are non-general fund supplemental requests being recommended. For economic development and housing, we're recommending increasing the maintenance at the Meadow of Honor Trail for an additional 65,000, as well as software and training for the housing division for 53,000. For public works, we're recommending to add 2 million dollars for operations and maintenance of four PFOS water treatment plants in order to remove some contaminants in the water and to comply with state and federal regulations. We're also recommending to add a senior water production operator and to purchase a water utility truck. There's sufficient revenue in the water fund to support the proposed amendments. This table here outlines all, all our, all funds amended budget for 2425. We manage close to 100 different funds and all with different restrictions and limitations, and we've categorized them all on this table. There are a total of seven different fund categories, and I'm not going to go through every single one of them here, but I'll just highlight a couple of them. You know, when we developed last year's budget, I think the underlying theme was to maximize all of our resources and invest it right back into our community and our infrastructure, and you'll continue to see that in this upcoming fiscal year's budgets across all funds. Other governmental fund category there, which is the second line there, is primarily made up of federal, state, and county grants for specialized programs. But also included in this category is also the creation of the new capital fund for the civic center revitalization project, where we will record all the expenditures for the project. The internal service fund categories is made up of several different funds. The structure is essentially that they charge other funds based on a methodology to pay for their operations, and you could see the figures on the table there. For water fund, we're proposing 57.7 million dollar budget. The vast majority of the increase is to comply with water mandates and PFOS treatment facilities, as well as continuing with major capital improvements. And last but not least, the housing authorities' adopted budget totals 51.9 million. And the budget includes funding from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for the mainstream vouchers program and housing assistant program portability. Switching gears a little bit over to the amended CIP plan for 2425. We're proposing an amended CIP of 189.5 million dollars. This is a 159.3 million dollar increase for 2425. Again, this is primarily due to the civic center revitalization project, the Euclid building improvements, the Woodbury Park expansion and renovation, and other street and, street water and sewer improvements. Again, these are significant amounts that are being invested in our parks and community facilities this upcoming fiscal year and beyond. I have some examples of some major projects within each category, but for the sake of time, I will hand it over to Patricia.
Thank you, Alvaro. So as you can see, we have included a lot of wonderful additions in the next year's budget. You know, just the CIP by itself is almost 160 million. It is exciting, however, it is also, we want to make sure we are financially healthy and we can support for all these kind of, you know, wonderful things that were, it's happening. In January, I presented a financial update outlining several scenarios of the general fund forecast for the next five years. And the slide over here is the base scenario, and updated was the most recent data gathered from either our revenue consultants or based on the market consensus. So the bottom line is, we project over the next five years, the city will continue to maintain a balanced budget. This does not take one-time or capital-related projects into consideration. What's included on this slide here is the forecast of the 8.8 million per year debt service for our new bond, as well as the additional purse UAL payments. Now, we do realize that our operating expenditures are catching up with our projected revenues, and this is a change from the previous years, because in the past several years, we have pretty significant surpluses year after year. But from now on, it's going to, you're going to see a little bit change. So for the next few years, besides expanding our revenue base through economic development, actively seeking grant opportunities as council members recommend it, as well as monitoring spending, we will also focus our energy on cost recovery. One of the cost recovery approaches is to reevaluate our current fee schedule. It does take a holistic approach to contain cost, to increase revenue and improve cost recovery, and to just maintain a sustainable budget moving forward. And I believe this concludes our presentation regarding the amended, proposed amended budget for next year. We're here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
John, please go ahead.
First of all, not a question, but thank you very much for all that you do. We are well-funded here because of what you do on a daily basis and the awards that you've received. I just had a quick question. It's a minor question. On the pension paydown, our trust account, what kind of rate of return are we making on the trust account?
Right now, it's below the 6.8, of course, but it varies. So when the market was taking a hit, that fund also, that trust is also taking a hit. It's a money market fund. But on average, I believe it's about 2.5%.
Okay, but we can't go wrong by saving and paying down the pension liability early. Appreciate that, and again, thank you for all that you do and keep us well. When other cities and counties and other places are struggling to balance their budget or coming up, taking the reserve funds and balancing their budget, we've been blessed here in Garden Grove with our, you know, finance group, so thank you very much.
Stephanie?
Patricia, I just, I have to say that you are such an asset to this organization. You have such a unique and precise way, I think, of showcasing our financial overall health. And I do believe that truly then broadcasts just such a deep level of transparency back to the community. So I really want to thank you and your entire team. For me, just looking at some highlights, to see those distinguished budget presentation awards and to know that just the amount of work and the quality of work and scope that you are putting into it on a daily basis, a double A long-term rating, and then to drill in a little bit to being able to see those hotel visitor tax numbers. That's, that's pretty exciting to see that at 28 million and above. That's, that's amazing to know the growth that we have and the potential ahead. Obviously, the supplemental requests focusing on community beautification and graffiti, code enforcement, which, these are all such priorities to this council. And then the non-general fund, trail maintenance and PFOS. I think it really shows our commitment to infrastructure, to our parks and quality of life here in Garden Grove, and these are strong investments for our residents and really shows our fiscal health. So again, we have a balanced budget. This comes with a lot of work and creativity and time, but again, thank you to all of you.
George?
Again, Patricia, thank you for everything, and I know we've said it all up here, that the GFOA, did I say that right? You know, we're really proud of that. Other cities, I mean, you guys are being nice, but other cities, when they amend a budget, they're mentioned down. We've got our neighboring cities who are really circling bankruptcy right now. I know Westminster, Orange, Cypress, they're all having some major financial problems, and I mean major. Garden Grove, when you compare and contrast, is like apples and oranges, and I think that's primarily due to you and your staff. All right? You keep us honest, you keep us on point, you let us know when we're going off track and maybe spending a little bit more than we should. And honestly, that is, it's just amazing. It's just amazing. So I just want to thank you for that. And it's kind of refreshing. We're, we're amending a budget upward with money that we've already earned. We're, we're amending a budget upward with money that we've already earned. You know, so, I mean, that's very, very refreshing, very, very refreshing in, in this economic environment especially, so, thank you again.
Mayor Proten, if you've got a microphone that works.
Yes, so, um, thank you so much to you and your staff. I think, I agree with, um, council member Stephanie and George already said that, so I won't repeat that. One other thing that I want to mention is that, um, because of you, you know, a lot of number in there, it's hard for us to keep track and think which one is good and not good, but we trust that the team do a good job and we have no problem with that, and thank you for making our job easier. I noticed that we have the two hundred and fifty thousand this year for, um, I guess, um, for the, from city manager to do the beautification for the city. So thank you for paying attention to that too, because I have seen a lot of graffiti, and I think that was specifically for that help. So, um, thank you for requesting, Lisa, and looking forward to make some changes, because I have many people reach out and asking to help with the graffiti, and I actually even, this morning, I texted Lisa, and there's so many places that we need to, you know, put some work to it. Thank you.
If I may have a minute, first, congratulations, a hard-earned GFOA award. I, I know it doesn't come easy, and hopefully we have more awards coming. So big congratulations to you and your finance department, and also our city manager and the A Team that we have to, that have delivered, really delivered in, in a big way. So I've, I've looked at the capital improvement plan, the budget amendment, and it's in the single digit. I like that very much. I, I vote down anything that's more than a single digit. I like single digit. I don't like double digits, okay? And here, the, the increase or the amendment is well-spent in all the areas that we focused on, police station construction. I'm reading from page eight of nine pages in the staff report, and it says, "Public Record of Public Information is Published on Our Website for All Residents to Review." I hope I'm reading this right. I think I am. The funds that we are amending are for police station. Woodbury Park Expansion and Renovation, wow, if you go look at the park now, and you guys were there to launch the expansion and renovation, thank you to John Montanes and his, his team. Various sewer main replacements and rehabilitation, well, guess what? That's in my district, so I can't complain. It's District Four, a lot of it. Various water capital projects, again, that's right, right where, uh, in my district, so, um, that is, uh, money well-spent, and I know that those are sewer deficiencies that we need to replace. The Euclid Building Parking Lot Tenant Improvement, we've all voted on that unanimously. So we're, not to go over the same ground, but that, that is definitely long-term interest of our residents, and we're bringing in tenants, uh, and, and, and the vacancies there will, will go away. We're gonna try to rent as many floors as we can and generate revenue. And various street rehabilitation projects, uh, this is all for the betterment of our, our, our communities and our neighborhood. It's right in line with what the mayor and, and we've signed on to, which is plan, build, and beautify. Everything in this budget falls in line with that, so, um, I, I'm, I'm really proud of what we have. And again, to kind of echo my colleagues, is that we're the envy of many cities. We have a reserve to speak of. We're in a healthy position, and so they're, going forward, I see the charts. I think we're headed in the right direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you. First and foremost, thank you so much to your team, to you for all the hard work. I, I think, um, at the beginning of my first term, I think myself and Councilmember O'Neill were on the budget study session ad hoc that we had, and it's, it's wild to see where we were to where we are now. I think it was myself, Councilmember O'Neill, and Councilmember Beard. And so, you know, to be able to finish off our eight years and see where we are and where we're leaving the city is, is really nice, and I think a way for us to kind of, you know, tie that bow and say, "We, we did a good job while we were here." Not to say that I am, I did pay attention to your last slide, and I am very, you know, concerned for the city moving forward past twenty-twenty-six and what that will be, but I'm sure that, you know, Councilmember Tran, Councilmember Joe Dovin, and Councilmember Bradigan will do, continue to do a good job, and with the new incoming council members, you know, pay attention to that and make sure that they're looking ahead. And I think that we should still continue to look for grants. There are, even if it's small grants, we should still really dedicate staff time and maybe even consider, you know, grant writer position, or maybe a new task for the intern, because, you know, five hundred thousand there, two hundred thousand there, a million here, all of that does help with other costs and moves monies around. So I think, you know, I'm so excited for the monies we were able to get through our grant efforts, and also monies we were to receive from the state and federal government, as well as the county, for other opportunities that we were looking for, that I'll speak to later in my council comments. But continuing to do things like that, continuing to meet with our higher electives to make sure that they are aware of what projects we have and what needs we, we need to be met, and then seeking out other opportunities, you know, random grants for small things we never thought. I, I know that maybe staff time to procure for that grant might not outweigh it, but if you think about long-term, I think it still pays off, so we should still consider those little grants. Thank you.
Anyone like the motion?
Yeah, I'll move, move.
We have a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Motion, motion received, seven yes votes.
Item fourteen.
Item fourteen is adoption of a resolution establishing an unclaimed property policy, and Ms. Song is going to give that report.
Hi, good evening, it's me again. This is something exciting. This is a brand-new policy to establish standard procedures for the city to eschew unclaimed properties in accordance to state law. We have been doing this process in the past, and we have been abiding to the state laws to the T. This policy is really just an enhancement for us to have a written, formal documentation outlining the procedures, and as well as something to demonstrate transparency, best practices. So there are two categories of unclaimed properties covered under this policy. The first is the staledated checks. Those are the payments issued by the city, which are not cashed by the recipient within six months after the issuance. And the second category is the unclaimed deposits, and these are the refundable deposits that meet the refund eligibility or payment that did not clear the recipient's financial institution and have been unclaimed for a period of over three years. Again, the city has been following the state law, making every effort to return these funds to the proper individuals. When all attempts fail, the city would compile a list of unclaimed checks and deposits and publish it as a public notice once a week for two consecutive weeks in a local newspaper. Unless claimed, these funds then becomes the property of the city after forty-five days from the date of the publication. So the policy we present today summarizes these procedures and formalizes them into a policy standard. Once the policy is adopted, we will also start publishing those unclaimed properties on our city's website, and this is another effort to promote transparency and for, you know, best practices. So this concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or motion?
Yeah, just a quick note, um, I read in the packet, and it said that we have some instructions to tell people how to claim their property, so do we have it somewhere on our website?
Great question. Yes, we do. Along with the unclaimed properties, we also have a claim form with detailed instructions of how to claim those properties if they believe it rightfully belong to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one suggestion. I'm not trying to change the policy or vote it up, but usually, I, I like an appeal or grievance process, just in case somebody comes forward and says, "This is outside of forty-five days, the city have claimed it." I, I still would like a grievance or appeal process for those who do pursue it after the forty-five days, if, if at all feasible. But I will reserve that for future changes to policy if need be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so for, for the council to know, there is a standard appeal that, in our municipal code, that says any decision of a city officer or employee can be appealed to the city council whenever there is not any other specific appeal process. For example, land use decisions, you know, can get appealed to Planning Commission, and from there can get appealed to city council. But any other decision of a city official that's not specifically listed as, you know, with a specific appeal provision, there's a catch-out that says, "If anyone is unhappy with the way a city employee or officer acted, they can always appeal to the city council." There is a fee, though, and they, and the city clerk has the appeals form for those.
Thank you, city attorney. That's really good to know, and the residents know that there is an appeal process applicable in this case also.
Quick question. Is that actually an appeal? I mean, how would that work? So let's say it's day forty-six, and I discover I want my property back from the city, and I think, "Oh, it's past forty-five days, sorry, it's ours now." I pay the fee, come to the council meeting, I have three minutes to talk, and public comments. Will it automatically be agendized, that we can make a decision? Or do two of us have to bring it up and put it on the agenda? How, how does that work?
No, if, if it's appealed to the city council, then the, the code says that the clerk has sixty days to agendize it.
So that's an automatic agenda item?
Yes, it, it would have to be agendized.
Voting item, agenda, if they paid a fee to have it agendaed.
Thank you. You answered my question.
Yeah, what happens is normally, we address the issues before it actually gets to the level of the council. We, we don't want to bother the council with minor items. If it's a major item that we cannot resolve, then you'll, you'll be able to hear it.
Believe we have a motion in a second?
Yep.
Call the vote.
Motion, motion received, seven yes votes.
Item fifteen.
Item fifteen is introduction and first reading of an ordinance to adopt the paramedic tax override rate for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five. And this ordinance is entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Establishing the Amount of Money for Paramedic Services That Must Be Raised by an Ad Valorem Tax Override in the Setting of the Tax Rate of Said Override," and Ms. Song will be giving that report.
I'm clerk. Good evening, may here council members. I promise this is the last item you're gonna hear from me tonight. This is an ordinance to authorize the tax override of eight cents per a hundred dollars of assessed valuation of taxable properties within the city to provide paramedic services to our community members. So the tax override was originally approved by our voters in nineteen-seventy-four. The tax is designated to fund for ongoing costs of emergency medical care system and provide, you know, the service to the community members. The nineteen-seventy-four ballot measure set a limit of the tax at ten cents per a hundred dollars assessed valuation of the property, and we have been assessing this at eight cents per a hundred dollars assessed valuation since, since twenty-seventeen. So paramedic taxes, the levy process, it's, it's required by, um, the county to, and, and the state law to go through an ordinance or resolution process. And the service actually right now has been provided by Orange County Fire Authority since we transitioned our fire protection services to OCFA. We estimate that we will collect approximately fifteen point eight million of paramedic taxes in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, and these funds will be paid to the OCFA as part of our twenty-seven million dollar annual contractual obligation to provide the service. So we did chat with our chief, Chief Covey, and, you know, historically, the OCFA stats show that about seventy-five percent of service calls received are related to emergency medical services, and particularly because OCFA maintains a, um, a very precise database of the stats on the calls. For our city, in twenty-twenty-three, paramedic incidents accounted for about eighty-one percent of total incident volume. So this amount of paramedic taxes that we're paying, you know, we're collecting and paying to OCFA is well justified to serve the community. So to levy the tax again, the government code requires the city council to set the levy annually by ordinance or resolution, and this is why we're here tonight to ask you, to ask you to introduce and conduct the first reading of the ordinance titled, "Establishing the Amount of Money for Paramedic Services That Must Be Raised by Ad Valorem Tax Override and Setting the Tax Rate of the Said Override." That is all for my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, questions, comments?
I can make a comment. It's, it's money well-spent, I can tell you. Besides our agency, agency here in Garden Grove doing so well financially, the Orange County Fire Authority is a very well-run financially organization, and the money that they spend, they scrutinize every dollar, and like us, they, they are sitting in a very good position right now. But they're very conscious of contract cities, even though we're the minority in the group. They are conscious of, of any increases that would be passed along to a contract city. So you heard earlier tonight that that went up four percent this year. They can go a maximum of four point, four point five. In the early years that we went over since nineteen, we were very low. I think there was one under two percent, maybe one, another one over two percent. But recently, they did finalize all their labor contracts in the last two years, and those, those went fairly well, but there was, there was significant increases, just like most labor contracts in the, in the Southern California region recently. So that is a very labor-intensive, service-providing group, so the raise that you see goes to wages and benefits to keep the agency going. So, um, so, you know, it's, it's money well-spent in the, in the ambulance, uh, paramedic service. So I will make the motion to, to move it.
All the vote?
Motion, motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, takes us on to matters. There's none listed. We'll go around the horn real quick. George?
Just, uh, this, yeah, I guess it was yesterday, the Navigation Center officially opened, and is taking people, I, I'm really excited about that. I know a lot of staff work, and a lot of our work has gone into making that a, a reality, and, you know, I'm hoping that this will have a, an impact on our homeless population in the city and kind of help to drive those numbers in a downward thing. So we're really, really cautiously optimistic on that. I'd like to, can't wait to get our first report on what's going on there and how many folks are being served and that kind of stuff. It, you know, it'd be kind of cool to, to get that first report in the next month or two. Concerts in the park are back. First one's June twenty-seventh, and then I guess they move over to Eastgate after that. Real excited about that. A big shout out to the Garden Grove Community Foundation for doing that every year. So looking, looking forward to that. This last week, I got about, about a half a dozen emails from folks that were, uh, and, and I think they're form emails, you know, the, because they all read exactly the same, just a different name at the bottom, about the state's solar permit system. I guess there was a law that was passed that went into, uh, law this year and requiring cities to have an online rapid permit system for solar installations. I was unaware of that new law, as I think, if any of you guys got those emails, you probably were too, so I reached out to find out about it. I think we got an extension. We're supposed to have it done at the end of May. But the system that they're going with, the city decided to go with, it won't be up and running until mid-July. So it is in the works. It is something happening. So I just wanted to make sure, and if any of those folks that are sending those emails, I'm sure they probably all work for solar companies, I, you know. But it is, the city is on top of it. We are on, on that, and with that being said, that's all I have.
Real quick, just wanted to comment. One of the speakers tonight was commenting about the situation like Gilbert and Chapman, that area with the drainage ditch. We are working on that, the, the wheels of government turn a little slower, but we have him, are working on new fencing, working with OCTA and, and other parties that are involved in who owns what fence and things like that. So we are moving on that stuff. The, as far as the Social Security Department area, you know, a lot of the areas that were mentioned by the speaker, you know, there's a lot of private property there, so fencing along those areas are, are private property owners that have to make a decision to invest in their own security. And they can sign a, you know, a, a standing order of no trespassing that our police will enforce if they do that. The Women's Club, Social Security area.
that our police will enforce if they do that, the women's club, Social Security area, but it does, it, it is a personal responsibility of the landowner or the, the owner to maintain their property, so if there's security enhancements that can be made, I implore them to please do it, because we'll do everything we can do on our end to improve the fencing and the lighting and things that we're responsible for on the city property, but on private property owners, they, they need to do their due diligence, and if you have a landlord that's not doing these things, what I call a slumlord, like we were talking about in District Six just two weeks ago, you know, that is on the, the, that is on the landowner, that is on the, the owner of that facility to step up their security. If they've got tenants that are paying thousands, tens of thousands of dollars a month to have a business, that owner needs to pony up some security, because it's, it's, it's ridiculous what, what they let get, get away with. The last thing is, again, on pool safety, I'm a big believer in that, and the second, a lot of our pools were built in the sixties and seventies, there's probably at least ten thousand pools in Garden Grove, every other house may have one, and in these larger areas, a lot of them were built before the secondary safety device, so, yeah, latching gate with a spring on it, that was, and a six-foot-high, or fence was typical, but a sliding door out to that area was, back in the day, was not an issue. With today's technology, with just the, something hitting the water with an alarm going off would benefit, so take, take advantage of technology, take advantage of a secondary fence, you know, secondary point of entry so kids can't get in there, and like the chief, Kovi said, is, you know, if you, you know, lifeguard, and if you're the designated lifeguard in a private pool area, and you leave, you need to designate someone else that's going to take that responsibility, that's all I got, thanks.
Mayor Proton.
Yes, sir. First, I want to say congratulations to February number two restaurant grand opening in District Three over the weekend, they have a very successful visit in Santa Ana, and so, Garden Grove City, welcome, and thank you for bringing your business to Garden Grove. Second, a registered nurse, Retai Nola, she had a cleanup event for, I, well, at the Brokehurst and Chapman, between District Two and Three, and so, she had that event and invited people to come and help, but I, we expected that would, no one showed up except her, but she actually took the time to get the trash and go around and pick up the trash along the buses, you know, along the street, so I, I came and talked to her, and invited her to have a, you know, kind of quick coffee, and offered her some doughnut and talked to her a little bit, and, and talked to her that maybe she could reach to our staff and doing other things more than just picking up the trash, but make a long story, sorry, thanks to her for her passion, and even though nobody showed up, but she still wanted to do something good for the city, and she said that she will continue to do that. So, after talking to her and tried to do what we could, I actually took a quick walk right at that same corner, Gilbert and Chapman, and see a lot of graffiti and several buildings that was vacant, and I did talk to a couple of people around there, and some of the business owners there said that they want to do something, but they would like to have maybe an opportunity to talk to our staff, so I did take some, some of the pictures to Lisa, and hopefully we will have conversation and see what we can do to help them. And last but not least, I want to say thanks to all the council member here today, support us on the, the trust bill conversation that we have, we talked about earlier. When I took the position to be council member, I want to be the voice for the little people or the one that, you know, you have a concern, but you spoke and no one listened to you, and so, even though only three people came, but I think what we voted, what we vote are the principles, right, we, just because, like, in my case, my tenant already pays, so it's not a, a problem for me, but at the same time, I read the, the letter, it said that the resident could come here tonight to meet with the board of director of District, sanitary district or whatever, so that's why people thought they come here to talk to them about the issue, but they didn't know that they came here for the council meeting, and that's why people came and left, and so, I just feel like that was their irresponsible for, you know, saying to town people, oh, you come here, you could talk to us, but then they're not here, and so that was why, so thank you so much to all of you and for your support, that was it, thanks.
Thank you, mayor and council, I know it's kind of a longer meeting than we anticipated, I was trying to adjourn by seven-thirty or eight o'clock, but since we've already kind of gone into the later parts of, almost nine o'clock now, I'm, I'm gonna enjoy it for myself in the three minute. First off, one of my favorite agenda item every meeting is the spotlight. We didn't have any spotlight tonight, but we do have agenda item two and three, which I think are the spotlights of tonight, and that's the adoption of a proclamation recognizing June nineteenth as Juneteenth in Garden Grove, and I'd like to write this, to read into the record this very brief background. The City of Garden Grove has historically recognized Juneteenth as far back as nineteen ninety-seven by adopting proclamations. The proclamation attached continues the legacy Garden Grove has established with recognizing and supporting Juneteenth, which commemorates June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, when the last of the enslaved African-Americans residing in Galveston, Texas, were informed of their freedom two years after the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation. So, thank you, mayor and council members for adoption of that proclamation. The second proclamation tonight, I'd like to read also, the background, which is the proclamation recognizing June twentieth as the World Refugee Day. I'm reading this as a refugee. In twenty nineteen, council member Nguyen Penalosa introduced and requested a proclamation be adopted by the city council, which was subsequently unanimously approved. As noted by UNHCR, the UN Refugee Agency, World Refugee Day falls each year on June twentieth and is dedicated to refugees around the globe. World Refugee Day was held globally for the first time on June twentieth, two thousand and one, to commemorate the fiftieth anniversary of the nineteen fifty-one convention relating to the status of refugees. It was originally known as Africa Refugee Day before the United Nations General Assembly officially designated it as an international day in December two thousand. This year's theme is to promote empathy and understanding and to foster compassion and solidarity towards those forces to flee their homes. Attached is the annual proclamation recommended for adoption, and I believe our city staff can provide it to the public if they request a copy, and thank you very much to council member Nguyen Penalosa. You represent us well, and myself as a refugee and a family, and we are a community of refugees, immigrants, we cannot not recognize June twentieth as World Refugee Day, so, personal thank you to council member Nguyen Penalosa. But I also want to thank council members Stephanie Koffenstein for her very well-versed letter penned to Los Angeles Board of Supervisor to explain to them why we have to request that LA Supervisor Board change the recognition of April thirtieth, and not as Jane Fonda Day, but as it's been traditionally recognized as the Vietnamese ex-patriots' Black April, April thirtieth commemoration of the fall of Saigon. And I also wrote a letter, and in my letter to the Board of Supervisor of Los Angeles, I sent along a copy of our Black April proclamation with all our signatures on it, which we passed. So, thank you to mayor and council for the, the tradition of recognizing Black April, and thank you to Los Angeles Board of Supervisor who has since rescinded and chosen another day. So, I'd like to thank Stephanie and myself to have made a difference, that we did raise our voice in a timely manner, very next day, and, and our voices were heard, and I also want to thank Jane Fonda herself for accepting a different day, and that is a lot of recognition of our community here, especially, I want to remind people, we're the largest Vietnamese-American community outside of Vietnam itself, right here in Garden Grove, not Westminster, it's not Santa Ana, it's Garden Grove, so we are the heart of Little Saigon, we have the, the largest population outside of Vietnam itself, and three of, of our members here on this dice is of Vietnamese heritage. So, thank you for the proclamation of Refugee, World Refugee Day, and also the proclamation recognizing Juneteenth. Lastly, I want to speak about the, the tragedy of drowning, I myself was almost a victim of drowning in my teen years, and I know family members who have lost a child, and they've been so traumatized, that family has never been the same since the loss of their nine-year-old in a pool. So, I advise everyone who has a pool to put up barriers and to provide the supervision, because the chief, Kovi, is right, it only takes five minutes, and the numbers are going down, but a hundred and eleven, a hundred and eight incidents in our county a year? That's like every three days. That's too much, that's way too much. I'd like it to be zero incidents, so let's drive those numbers down and do everything we can to better supervise the people who are most at risk. Thank you.
Thank you. First off, today we had our Arbor Day ceremony, it was in District Five at West Haven Park, our Public Works team, kudos to them for planning a coastal live oak, we had community members and also students from Garden Grove High School, it's a lovely opportunity to showcase how we're keeping the garden in Garden Grove and planting trees, and I know that that coastal oak will provide a lot of great shade for the playground equipment there at West Haven Park, so it was a good day. I also want to congratulate all the Gigi Gem winners, that campaign is wrapped up, beautiful homes showcasing their pride in, in their homes and in their neighborhoods, and I believe there'll be a reception to honor all the winners coming at a future council meeting. And I also want to wish a happy belated birthday to a woman named Pearl Tompkins, she turned a hundred years old at the end of March, or at the end of May, and I had the opportunity to go to her home and meet her, and I brought a little certificate for her, just congratulating her on her hundredth birthday. It's not every day you get to celebrate somebody turning a hundred, so happy birthday again to Pearl. And speaking of birthdays, thank you to staff and my colleagues for my crumble cookies that arrived at my house today for my birthday next week, thank you.
Happy early birthday. First, I would like to thank city manager Lisa Kim and assistant city manager Matt West for attending the League of California Cities General Membership Meeting, I was not alone, so thank you very much. I encourage my colleagues to attend those meetings when possible, as, especially the newer council members and the one that will be remaining past my term, to get more involved, the league is a great resource, I will be vacating my spot as the state director in September at the annual conference, so I highly recommend that if you're able to attend the conference, please do, it's, it's good, thank you, Steph, it's me in Long Beach, please apply to be on policy committees, and get involved with the OC Division specifically if you can, if you're able and you're willing, it's amazing opportunity to network, but also get ahead of crazy legislation coming down the way that's going to be impacting local control. Next item, I had the honor and privilege to speak at Girls in Government Day in the City of Tustin last week, it was really great to see a lot of young women in high school who were interested in local government, whether that be in elected positions, or, you know, city engineers, clerk, city manager, and I thought it was a really amazing event, and I know that I mentioned it to the city manager, and I actually mentioned it to council member Stephanie Koffenstein, and we're both interested in seeing Garden Grove do something very similar, I would love to potentially have a meeting to discuss our options sometime soon, hopefully after July, because I know we all have vacations planned and big events, and we have a council meeting, so maybe after that, if we could get together and see what potential. It was really cool, the City of Tustin also, I don't know if it was through their sponsorships or how they did that, but they also provided blazers to the young women that attended, and it wasn't a lot of students, it was probably thirty at most in the room when I was there, I don't know if they left and came, but that was, I thought that was pretty amazing, because one thing you can tell is, you know, professional attire is expensive, and so for younger students who are applying for jobs, or internships, or for college, whatever, that may be, at, at least they know, in, in my district, it might be more challenging to come by, so I think that was a really special. Second to last, the Central Cities Navigation Center ribbon cutting, so happy that that happened, and thank you to staff for putting that on, it was really nice. I'd be remiss to not shout out Senator Tom Umberg, who could not be present, but he did help us achieve over four million dollars, so I want to make sure he gets his, his, his special kudos, and I know that we have something planned for him in the future, but I knew he couldn't make it and wanted to be there, he did send representation. And last, I would like to wish a happy first Father's Day to David Penalosa.
City manager Lisa Kim.
Thank you, mayor, members of the city council, I too am extremely proud to have delivered the Central Cities Navigation Center to the cities of Garden Grove, Fountain Valley, and Westminster, and it was truly a collaborative effort of over eighteen months of hard work, Earthless team, our homeless liaison analyst, Kristy Lee, the ribbon cutting was led by OCR and John's team, it was collectively an extraordinary group effort, and one of my highlights certainly in, in this role as your city manager, and I look forward to sharing highlights in the coming months.
General counsel, anything to report or any need for closed session?
No, mayor, nothing for me, thank you.
All right, with that, we will stand adjourned, everyone, enjoy the rest of your evening.